Bit by a beat.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
You want to hit the pedal a little bit?
It's not, it's, huh?
One hundred and twelve.
Well, it's one at six o'clock.
Oh, I was just trying to get people.
Yeah.
That clock is wrong, so we're gonna go by the. It's now six o'clock.
All right. How you doing, bud?
What?
Good.
All right, is everyone here? Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, School Board Meeting. It is now six o'clock PM. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Yes, that's a huge, yes. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to start with the Student of the Month recognition. Mrs. Warner?
Good evening.
Did you look out into the crowd?
I did. Doesn't look like any of our students are here this evening. I know that in terms of spring sports, we've had a lot of cancellations. So with the weather being nice and feels are playable, I know that some of our students are involved in athletics this evening. I will go ahead and read what's here, and I will present to the students tomorrow in person. My first student of the month leads our nominations from National Honor Society, and there's one junior high student and one high school student. Parker Cozy is our junior high student. This is what Dr. Burgess writes about him. Parker Cozy is an eighth grader in Algebra I. He works hard every day and always has a smile on his face. I'm just gonna insert there that Algebra I is a ninth grade class. He has received great scores on his tests in Algebra I, but still wants to do extra credit homework. I think he really likes math. Parker is a diligent student with a great attitude and a wonderful personality. He never ceases to amaze me, and he was nominated by that Algebra I teacher, Dr. Burgess. So congratulations, Parker. And our high school student is Sophia Contreras. This is what Ms. Rebecca Boyd writes about Sophia. I want to nominate 10th grader Sophia Contreras. She has been a consistent, positive attitude and a determined worker in my classroom all year long. Sophia is kind to everyone, she loves to share a laugh, and is a great role model for others. I have been amazed at the progress Sophia has made this year for herself, and she deserves it. Nominated by Ms. Rebecca Boyd.
That is awesome.
Um.
Go ahead.
Do you want me? Okay, so Portage Lakes Career Center also had one of Springfield students as their student of the month last month, and that student was Ian Hartman. Ian is a college-credit-plus student at Springfield High School, but he opted to take this shorter, not full program over at Portage Lakes called phlebotomy. And he did quite well in that, in addition to excelling in that program and being one of the first eight students to graduate from it. And of those eight students, five of them were Springfield students. Four of them were Springfield students. Ian was our homecoming king, and he carries quite the load. He is in public speaking and ethics and trigonometry and anatomy and physiology. Fully high school, or fully college-credit-plus student. So congratulations to Ian.
That is awesome.
Can hear about that man today.
Congratulations to those students. And phlebotomy, this is their first year, isn't it? Yeah, I thought so. All right, Mr. Vaughn? He's on.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is kind of a long time coming with some of the teams and recognition that we're gonna mention. Wow. You know, all of the kids, whether it be from the fall or the winter, which wasn't too long ago, especially when it probably just had snow last week. You know, they're very, very busy. So we didn't get to recognize the golf team when they won the MAC championship back in the fall, because they all played basketball. And when the time came around, it was always on Tuesdays, they're always having games. So we thought this was a nice time to bring them along with. We did have the cross-country in the fall when they were here, and we did have an opportunity to recognize all of those that I'm about to talk about at some sort of special event, whether it was a basketball game or a football game, halftime, in between quarters, because we wanna give them the recognition they deserve. But just a highlight for all intents and purposes of this meeting, our boys' golf team for back-to-back years, they won the MAC championship. And with that, they were a 21-win season, and that is a school record. So congratulations to Coach Morgan. You have Logan Porter up there, I'm just going left to right. Connor Akenrod, Brady Hahn, Jacob Thomas, Maddox Warford, and Wyatt Bartholomew. Wyatt Bartholomew is a non-attending student. He goes to STEM school out in, or the Bynum School out in Redstone, but he does live in the district. So congratulations to the golf team. And then probably going right into continuing with golf. Brady Hahn, he was a state qualifier, just did an outstanding job, broke a lot of records along the way, and he finished 27th out of 72 while he was there, which is quite the achievement. He's just done an awesome job. And for back-to-back years, Coach Morgan was MAC Coach of the Year. And there's Coach Morgan, Coach Jack Morgan, back-to-back, that can dust. Moving on, we, I put all these up here, and we can kinda scroll through a little bit, but just from winter, I thought we had a really good turnout for all-league recognition in the Metro Athletic Conference. It's probably the most recognition that I remember seeing since I've been here in a very, very long time. We had 23 athletes that were recognized. And, you know, this went out, you know, on our slideshow at our winner awards banquet, so I'm not gonna name every name, but we had multiple first-teamers throughout every sport. I don't remember there being a boys' first team in a very, very long time, maybe probably since like Michael Kasich and them. And I don't remember, well, maybe was Dylan first team? I didn't think so, but Dylan was close. And I don't remember having a girl on first team for girls' basketball, so I thought that was pretty impressive. So congratulations to all of our individual recognition as well. You see Omar up there, and I'll talk about him in a second, once we get through this. But he was, you have to be a MAC champion in wrestling to earn first team, and he was back-to-back, his freshman year and his sophomore year, which I believe he's coming up, so. But Anthony Ahern, just a great student, great kid, you know, cool, calm, collective. He had an awesome season and an awesome career. Fun to watch play. He tied the record for three-pointers in a game with Trenton Stevens, who broke it last year. Then for a season this year, he had 77 three-pointers this season, which is just awesome. And then 163 in a career.
Wow.
Just great numbers. And he'll be on the new record boards that are coming here by the end of the month, hopefully. When I say the end of the month, end of the school year, I should say. They're in type seven right now, but Anthony, just an outstanding career here at Springfield, and we're gonna miss him on the basketball team, and in all ways. Again, Omar, back-to-back MAC champion, 132 pounds. And the sky's the limit for him. I know he works really hard, does a lot in the offseason. He goes to Nationals up in Fargo. He's hitting the weights really hard, and he also participates in soccer sports, so he's a good one to have. Our girls' bowling team, they were awesome, MAC champions. They shared it with Norton, and they had a perfect season in terms of duels with the league going into the final match, so. Little bit bittersweet, but then they turned around in the tournament at the end of the year, and they got the W to go ahead and have a share of the title with Norton. So congratulations to our girl bowlers. One of them being Melana Martin, special recognition. You're the Bowler of the Year in the Metro Athletic Conference. And the Metro Athletic Conference bowling is awesome. You know, we're always putting out teams to state, girls out to state, so to be considered the best, just quite a achievement. And in her second year, Melinda Weakland, and she won't take all the credit. She was assisted by her husband, Jeremy, who's a volunteer. She was Coach of the Year for the Metro Athletic Conference for girls' bowling. Congratulations, Melana. Again, Melana, not just Bowler of the Year, but she also qualified for state. Had an opportunity to go watch her, and she finished, I think she was 24, but she was a top 25 finisher, which is an outstanding finish for Melana. And she's back again. I believe Melana's only a junior, so we're looking for good things, yep. We also had on the other side, Michael Knox, and the boys had a great year also as a team. But to go down as a state qualifier, as a senior, 14th place, top 15 places become All Ohio, so he was, you know, the first five of our first team, second five, seventh team, and then the last five are Honorable Mentioned. He was Honorable Mention All Ohio. And I don't believe we had an All Ohio Bowler since Frankie Harrison. Yeah, Garrettson, Frankie Garrettson. Mama's a bus driver for us, too. So it's been a few years, and he's going from rolling the ball this way. Now he's a pitcher, he's still on this way for the baseball team, so congratulations to Michael. And again, back-to-back years, our girls qualified for the state cheerleading competition, and it's a big deal. If you haven't had a chance to go down there, it's a huge production. And there are a lot of people, and a lot of girls, and it is really loud, and there's a lot of spirit.
So loud.
I'll tell you that. And the girls had a great time. They do, you know, we do an awesome job, I think. Our coaches, anytime we send a team to state, I think it's a top-notch experience for them between, whether it's the boys' bowling, girls' bowling, or our cheerleaders, golf.
We take teammates down, we put them up in rooms. They do a ton of camaraderie building, going out to dinner, and just enjoying the experience. And while they were down there, they took fourth place in the non-tunnel division and seventh place in the non-building division. So congratulations to Coach Twab, Coach Meloziwet, Coach Cale, and the cheer squad. And then this weekend, I know there are a lot of familiar faces here that were there on Saturday. We had our annual reverse raffle. I just wanna say thank you. I know there's some first timers, and I know there, from the past, a lot of you have been a part. It's getting better and better every year, bigger and bigger every year. Everybody's having a good time, and we're raising a lot of money. We raised a significant amount of money, and we wanna thank, you know, Tara Garnier, Gina Gasper, and Julie Friend. They're the head of it, and we have a ton of parents that put in a lot of time. But it was a great success, and all that money's gonna go to, most of it's earmarked, but we have some big plans, and we're gonna continue to upgrade facilities and uniforms and things for our kids, so we're excited about that.
Nice.
Lastly, I just thought this was pretty cool. It's not so much at the high school, but we do have future Spartans, and the youth is what's important. You know, I was talking with Dustin Hardeman, and this is gonna go out. I wanted to share it up here, and it's gonna go out in final forms to the district, but we have like 75 kids that signed up for our youth flag football this spring. Last year was the first time we did it, and I think there was about 65. So it is growing, and then Dustin set it up for our little future Spartans, our youngsters, to go play at Cleveland Brown Stadium on May 5th. So that'll be exciting for them. And anybody can go be a part and watch, and there's a QR code there that will come out in email, and I believe you can donate to a certain cause and watch the Spartans getting it done, Cleveland Brown Stadium, so. So I thought that was nice. So a lot of good things going on athletically. Obviously, we're in the spring, and hopefully, we're out of the bad weather, and we can participate every night moving forward. I know we're supposed to get some weather tonight potentially, but, you know, if we can get consistent, get into graduation and prom and all the good things that are coming, it's another successful year, so.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the seniors, any of the sports, are they gonna move on, play college, any type of college sports? Do you know?
Yeah, I know that we did a signing during one of the alumni basketball games. We had three girls going to play softball. As of right now, Destiny Rujeria is going to Cleveland State. Melissa Hostetler, is she going to Ohio Northern? Ohio Northern. And then Sydney Hilliard, I believe is going to Malone. And I know we have two cheerleaders that were setting up for a signing day, one of them being Allison Rowley, and she's going to Mount. And there's another one going to Wash, I think. Ashley Pickett, yeah. So we have a couple of girls going to cheer. I haven't heard anything about baseball quite yet, but, you know, if there is others that are gonna be a part or decide to, we'll give them an opportunity to sign.
What about golf? Is anybody going?
Um, well, Brady would be the guy, and he just wants to focus on engineering. I think he's chemical engineer.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No problem with that, no.
I think chemical engineer, if I'm not mistaken, so. He obviously would have the opportunity if he would like somewhere, but he just really wants to move on and go to school and start a new chapter.
All right.
Hey, the good thing about golf is you can do it the rest of your life.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask, we got any green jackets in that?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Just this past weekend, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Go ahead, go, thank you.
Very impressive.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They don't have an athletic guy of the year. They wish they had. Should we nominate him? He's not here to hear this, but I think that he needs, Mr. Vaughn needs to be congratulated and recognized on this work that he puts in for our students. I know it's a paid job, but as with many of us or the people who work in the schools, the hours are never compensated, so. Thank you to him. And that's my, that's my comment on. That you're informal? More than informal. Anyone else have?
Good. I also attended the reverse raffle.
No beads.
Yeah. Somebody wouldn't buy beads from me, but that's okay. It was a great time, it was really nice to see. We had a lot of, I feel, new faces that were there, and I think we had a lot of elementary and even Shrop parents, and I've never really seen that. And I think that says a lot. So I'm gonna put out a plug, because they wouldn't do it at the event, or the, yeah, the event on Saturday, but the athletic boosters is always looking for help. And we have three right now. One that does not have kids in our, that go to our school anymore. One that come graduation this, in May, will no longer have kids in our district or in our schools anymore. And then one that will have one left. So it would be nice to see some more faces starting to get involved and learn it and maybe start getting ready to take it over. I don't see them just handing it over anytime soon, but they do a lot. And they, the band and everything, they all work together, so I just wanna throw that one up there.
And it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
A lot of fun. Some people won a little bit too much stuff, and I lost, but we won't name any things, Kevin Hannah. I am very salty about that. So go ahead. Yeah, two things that I wanted, and one for his daughter, but we won't talk about that either, so. Go ahead.
Thanks, Brandon. Last month, I talked about, I'll update the board and the public next month on some things that were happening in Columbus. It's been a little quiet, but I did say that we were gonna start the journey. And did you get the, there are some names, and it's gonna be on the board. I'm gonna pass out envelopes, and this paper, it's the marketing mine that I have. So Mr. Adams, you're gonna get one. Parker, you're gonna get one. Donnie, you're gonna get one. So it has to start somewhere, we just can't, one voice can't do it alone.
Thank you.
Are you gonna proofread for me?
Do I have to?
Yes, you have that.
So I volunteered the board and everybody in administration. We're gonna write letters to these people. Ways and Means does the taxes. Bill Romer is out of the, I believe, the 31st district, don't quote me on that. He's the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, there's the address there. And the public is also invited. You want a letter and an envelope? I'll give you one. I bought those out of my own money. That's how passionate I am about this. Steve Demetrius is currently our rep. That will change, I think, when they fill the representative for 32. And Representative Sarah Fowler-Arthur, which some of us know, she was a former state Board of Education member. She is now vice chair, primary and secondary education. I've reached out to her, she's also referred me to Steve Demetrioff. So you can pick one of those three. Next month, I'll pass out another one. My goal as a board member of this district and representative from the public is, I think the board, I think the people in Columbus need to know the differences and valuations. As I've discussed with Mr. Adams for years, we supply 61.8% of the funding for the school system, and the state gives us about 38.4, whatever that math is. It's not fair. There's reasons for that, I don't, I'm not gonna explain that tonight. So I will check in next month to see if we've all sent them out, so.
So can you email this?
You can email those also.
Can you email that information?
Yes, I can.
We have it, we'll email it to you guys. And then it will be, if the public wants to get it, can we put it, we can put it?
Put it on the site with the board agenda.
Yeah, we'll put it on the site with the board agenda.
The only one I have not put on there is Representative, State Senator Sykes, but he would be the other one. We'll start with the reps. Gotta start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
All right. I also went to the raffle, it was fun. I did win a game board basket, and I got 50 bucks back on the side, which was good. I did go to the school play. If you guys got a chance, that was a beautiful thing. I know I saw a few of you guys, for sure. At least, I went Friday, I know some of you guys went Saturday, too. I thought they did a great job, it was pretty good. And the other thing was kindergarten roundup. I'm probably stealing something from somebody again, but I apologize if I did. But that was super fun, just to see the excitement on the kids' faces and the parents.
And I think we had 48 families.
Forty-eight?
Forty, yeah, 48 or 49 families that walked through.
Beautiful.
So, and then some of those even registered on that night, so.
They had little tables, and they got stamps, and they got little prizes and stuff, so it was really fun.
And we got a lot of compliments on that, for that day.
Beautiful.
Just congratulations to all the students that did successful in school or in athletics this year.
Okay. Number eight, it is recommended that the board go into executive session at this time to discuss the employment of a public employee or official and preparing for, conducting, and reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with the employees.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Been moved in second that we adjourn executive session. We have vote, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion.
Give me a second, folks.
Been moved in second that we adjourn executive session, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Sorry.
That's all right. Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right. Number 11, citizens' comments on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time.
No, number 10, I'm sorry, sent the, approval of minutes.
Oh, I did number 10, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mrs. Farola? Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now we'll do it again. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five minutes duration. Are there any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to number 12, payment of bills monthly. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month March of pending audit.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Number 13, payment of bills then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payment of bills per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number 14, it is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for March 2024, and those are exhibits four, five, and six. Mr. Adams, do you wanna do any?
I'll, I'll talk, these are just the big reports on bills. Mr. Hofer, he always calls me if there's some issues. He hasn't called me, so that's always a good thing, and he's good.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Guys are moving. Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Moving to number 15, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 15.1, a resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Sandra Jett, effective April 4, 2024. 15.2, approve an unpaid leave of absence for teacher Melody Bush for the 2025 school year. 15.3, employment. Employ Katie Gantz as a classified substitute for the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment. and pre-employment screening effective first day assigned. 15.4, approve the following one-year limited contracts effective for the 2025 school year. Elizabeth Genep-
Genepini.
Genepini. Kendra Cox, Elizabeth Kreitz, Ashley Fraley, Brittany Glasgow, Elena Jackson, Claire Miller, Abigail Ray, Julia Rapaski, Julia, I'm sorry, Rapaski, Monica Rusick, Dana Taylor, and Shelby Ben von Gutten. 13.5, employ Derek Garber as a 100% intervention specialist per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective the 2025 school year. Any comments?
When you got, when you done, I'll go through.
Okay. Number 15.6, employ Karina DiMarco as a 100% intervention specialist teacher per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective the 2025 school year. And 15.7, summer school recovery. Approve Steve Schaper as an online summer school credit recovery for grades nine through 12 instructor for summer 2024 at the approved rate of $28.25 per hour. This position is an online position with a maximum of two hours per day for 27 days for a total maximum of 54 hours for the summer.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the person, or vote on the personnel items.
Just a couple of things. Melody Bush is going to be taking a sabbatical for a year, so she's going to start working on her master's. So we're very happy for her on that. The limited contracts, we do that every year. Those are the contracts that are only one-year contracts. So every year you'll see the same names until they move up to being a continuing contract, which is what, how many, do we do, five?
For the?
Limited?
Limited to, no, you have to, they have to have seven years.
Seven years.
But seven years on a license or, and three years in the district.
Okay. Then they go right to a continuing contract. Employment, we're excited. Again, we have, you know, with people retiring or resigning, we're hiring. We have quite a few people, I think, that are intervention specialists. So we have Derek Garber and Karina DiMarco. We had a huge amount of people apply. And when I did the interviews, and they, each one of our interviewers go through three sets of interviews. So it's, it's something a little bit different that we've started, that it's not just a one interview, one and done. So they go through different, so, and the last interview was with me. And at that point in time, we, I set them out and I, you know, talked with, with Mary. And both of them, when I offered them the position, you know, I tell them that, yes.
Did they?
And not only did that, but I give them like, I give them like, I say, okay.
They cried.
I, you know, I asked them if, if they want some time to think about it. And both of them immediately said, no, we want to work here in Springfield.
It's great.
And, and, I mean, we had, we had really, truly, an amazing group of interviews that we've had. So, you know, they, they wanted to be here. So, so we're excited for that. Summer school credit recovery, we do that every year. It's for the kids who need credit recovery. And Steve works with Apex with the students. So it's exciting.
It is exciting.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, moving to number 16, OPEC 179, letter of intent. It is recommended that the board approve a letter of intent with OPEC 179 for wages, hours, benefits, and working conditions regarding the employment of temporary or casual employee to specify, to specifically maintain the district grounds from April 1 through April 30.
September 30.
Or September, we have.
It's a short time.
Yes. Only get to 30.
We'll be back here next month.
Just go, Duane.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so what this is, is in the OPEC 179 contract, they do have a, a topic in there for casual employees, but it's for a very short time. And we weren't getting our grounds done. So we met with, we had a, actually, we had our first labor meeting with OPEC 179, which is, was something that they had asked for in their contract. And we brought this up to them and they were, they were okay with it. So we are going to hire somebody. I think Dustin is interviewing. And so we're going to have somebody that's going to be focusing just on the grounds from April to September.
Not April, April.
Not April and April, but April to September. So any extra help we can get on the grounds is going to be, is going to be a plus. So.
And this is a shout at that union because since I've been here, we've been trying to get this for a long, long time.
Yeah.
We don't have to pay a maintenance person to cut our grass.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And what it means by temporary is that even though they might work, you know, 40 hours, they're not part of the union. And then once those September 30th, their, their affiliation with us is done.
So I should hear no calls about long grass now anymore.
We're going to knock on wood.
Depend on the weather.
Well, yeah, it's the same because.
Only in Ohio, well, maybe for a week.
If you had three weeks of rain.
We didn't specify a scuba certification.
Yeah.
Good comeback. Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 17, a resolution regarding tentative agreement. Resolve that the board hereby adopt, adopts a resolution regarding a tentative agreement reached with OPEC Local 530 on April 3, 2024 for a collective bargaining agreement and authorizes and directs the superintendent to execute a final agreement reflecting the agreement, too many agreements, on behalf of the board.
I'll make a motion.
All right, well, second.
And this is, of course, the contract with 530.
Did you say? Okay. Can't hear you guys, I have to talk louder.
Sorry.
That's all right. My agent. Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Upstayed.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. All right, number 18. Whereas the board appointed Shelley Monacino as a superintendent by board action on February 20, 2024 for a five-year period commencing August 1, 2025, and authorized and directed the board president and the treasurer to execute a contract with the superintendent. And whereas the board and superintendent have finalized the specific terms of that contract, be it resolved that the board confirms and adopts the superintendent's contract as executed by the parties. And this is attached hereto in exhibit eight.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Mr. Adams?
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
Looking forward to continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging, hanging, and they're with us. It is number 19. It is recommended that the board approve the service plan contract with the Summit Educational Service Center for the 24-25 school year. And this is exhibit nine.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
This is our service plan with the Summit ESC. And just real quickly with number 20, when we get to that, that's the contract and we do this every year. We meet with them, they, they give us some. We have to pay money to the ESC anyway. It's how do we spend that money with them and the services, so. And if we, and we can adjust it throughout the year if we need it.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yep.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 20. Service, another, a service contract with Summit ESC. It is recommended that the board approve a service contract with the Summit Educational Service Center to provide employment services during the 24-25 school year at the cost of salary and benefits plus any other costs incurred with the employment of the individual or individuals upon written request of the district superintendent or designee. And the service contract was attached in exhibit 10.
Motion.
It's been moved in second.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 25, or 21, service contract with PSI affiliates in University Hospital. It is recommended that the board approve a three-year service contract with PSI affiliates or University Hospital to provide registered nurse service and medical assistance services for the 24-25 through the 26-27 school year.
So moved. Second.
So this is our services that we have with our registered nurse and our health aides in our buildings. And we're pretty consistent, I think, with, with them. So they're getting, you know, they get to know our kids and they get to know the health plans for our kids, so. They're.
And they, they're very responsive if there's questions or changes that need to be made. They're, it's really easy to communicate with them and they move very quickly to do what they need to do to help us.
And then they also help out with any health plans that we have to wait for the individual kids.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. The next one is a service agreement, number 22, for LLA therapy. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with LLA Therapy Limited to provide therapy services as necessary to the students of Springfield local schools from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Make a motion.
Second.
And this is, we go out for our, our physical therapy and our occupational therapy and some speech therapy for our students. Do you want to add anything?
No, but they do send us, like, our OT and PT folks are top-notch and they always say how Springfield is one of their favorite places to be. So they're a great team that we are very lucky to have all of them that come and work with us.
Okay.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Number 23. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with Total Education Solutions, known as TES, commencing on July 1, 2024 until June 30, 2025, to provide supervision, special education services, and related services in accordance with the requirements of the Ohio Department of Education per student as requested.
So moved. Second.
Sometimes we have students that need to be educated outside of Springfield and TES, Total Education Solutions, is one of those places that we use.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 24, service agreement. It is recommended the board approve a service agreement with full-spectrum marketing to provide marketing and crisis management services.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second then.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Uh, no, yes. Okay, so, you know, what we did is we interviewed several different, uh, companies, you know, to see, marketing companies, to see which is the best and what would get the most bang for our buck. One thing I will say about FSM is that they are under new management. They've grown their team. We met with their team and Cynthia and Miranda were in on, on that. And I think, I think they kind of impressed a little bit of some of the improvements that they're making. Some of the things I want to show you, since we've gotten them, now, this is from January of '23 to present. So we started with them in March of '22. But you could see that, this is on our social, our social media. We had 4,059 total likes on our pages, which was up 94% from 123 to now. We had over 1,124,284 organic impressions. And what that is, is that somebody just looking at our, clicking on our, our screen and looking at it. So that was up 280%. 344 new page likes, which is up 62.3%. 455, 4,555 link clicks, that means they were actually on it and clicked it to see, and that was up 201%. And then altogether with either looking at it, clicking it, sending it, sharing it, liking it, we had 137,600 total clicks, which was up 588.6%. You know, one of the things that we wanted was to improve our social media presence and to be more, and to be more transparent and to show all the good things that we're going out there. So this shows that from 123 to present, it is up. Now, the test is going to be, where are we from now, in a year from now? You know, our goal is to make sure that those numbers still keep rising. And then just the other, this is one of our, our online newsletters that we get. And you could see that the recipients who opened it were 16,000. First, it goes to 41,399 recipients. So that's how many emails we have in that see our, that see our webpage. For this one, so we had 16,322 people who opened it. We had 59 people who unsubscribed to it. And that could be that they just, you know, they put it in, they thought maybe it was something different or for whatever reason, but 59 out of the 16,000. We had total opens was 24,535, which shows that 8,000, 8,213 people opened the email more than once to just keep looking at it. And then we had 989 clicks, which indicates that we've said, that a recipient was clicking a link, using their cursor to follow device to connect to the district. And the reason why there's a difference between the recipients who opened and the total recipients, it could be a variety of reasons. One of the reasons is that we did have some email authentica, what's it called?
Domain authentication.
Domain authentications, which we fixed. That mail chimp might throw it into spam or might throw it into junk mail and not into their email. So we, we fixed that. So you, we could see that, that our newsletter is getting out there for it. So, you know, they offered us, some of the new things that they did offer us is we're going to do two social, and like, two, what do they call it? social, like, two, what do they call it? Two where we could pick something exciting, and then they're gonna do a whole presentation on it and get it out on social media. They're going to come and meet with us on a monthly basis to see what's going on. We're gonna try to get kids involved in doing, being like reporters or doing different things that we can put onto the screen. So that was the presentation.
And they also were helped with the production of the calendar?
Yes.
That went out to the community.
Yes, and we're gonna do the calendar again for this. And just like we did last year, we will use some of the funds from grant money to pick up the costs for this. And we also, because they belong to what is called Ohio Schools Council, which, Ohio Schools Council is a collaborator of just different companies that all the schools can belong to, and then we get discounts. So they now belong to OSC, and we belong to OSC, so we got a $2,000 discount on it also with that. And being their, and being their contract has been up in May, and we haven't signed a new one. They've still been working with us for the month.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay. Number 25, college credit, college credit plus memorandums of understanding. 25.1, University of Akron. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with the University of Akron for the college credit plus program for the 24-25 school year. 25.2, Stark State College. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with Stark State College for their college, college credit plus program for the 24-25 school year.
Motion.
Second.
And of course, this is us working with universities to provide credit, college credit plus for our students.
We've already signed with Kent State on top of it, so usually Kent is associated with this too.
Okay.
So we have Kent already on with this, so they're just a little later.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. 26, our five-year forecast update. Do you want me to have the motion first before you present? All right. It is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast update, and that is on the exhibit, I mean exhibited on the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And Mr. Adams, do you want to do a presentation?
Yes.
Or discussion?
I do. There's a couple of things that were unusual. As we all know, we're, we're still under the eyes of the Fiscal Commission. So the recommendation is typically we issue our revised five-year forecast in May. But since we did a updated financial recovery plan, it was advised to put it on in April. Now, this is no different, very, I shouldn't say no different. There was a little tweaks in personnel and in benefits, but when I say little, less than $10,000. So we're putting it on in April, hoping that the state auditor will take a look at it, okay, and release us. That's the goal, to release the Oversight Commission to Springfield. And I, I'll tell you why we should be released. But let's move down to our, the important thing for me. This is where I live at, right here. Cash pound, 7.02. 2021, we were at a negative $2.8 million. Look where we're at now. 2024, should have had my pointer, but 2024, $4,250,000, and I'm hoping to beat that, okay? Now, stays positive until 2027. The only reason that's a negative is because my renewal levies, if you want to go down a little bit closer, right there's the renewals, line 11.02. And this is what I'm gonna talk about for the next two or three months. You're gonna get sick and tired of me talking about it. But this district is on the cusp of something I've never seen since I've been here in 15 years, okay? We're gonna have the ability based on, and remember, renewals are no increases. It doesn't increase your taxes. You've voted on these for over 20 years. We've always been fortunate that you've always voted yes. We hope that is maintained. But what this will do to this district is it will keep us in a very good position, meaning that based on this forecast right now, I'll be, I'll be long gone by, before we ever have to ask for more money. And I'm being facetious, but it gives us, gives Shelley, Miss Monacino, an opportunity to do, do stuff that we haven't been able to do for our kids. Our kids will get more programs, our teachers will get more resources, our athletics will get more resources. It's, it's a huge possibility that I'm very excited to be around for. Again, the critical part is 11.02. We have three renewals in November, okay? And look at the impact that it does. It takes a forecast solid all the way through. I cannot remember putting a forecast together and having positive numbers to the end of the five years. And if you look at the difference between year four, 2027, we have 6.3 million, 28, 5.4. So we're gonna go out even longer than that, okay? And it's very important. The good thing about what we're gonna do in the future as far as controlling costs is we have a, a report that we do every month for the Fiscal Commission. We plan on continuing to utilize that tool. It's a very powerful tool. It helps us anytime we make a financial decision, anytime we plan on spending money, it lets us know exactly the impact to the district, and it helps, not just this year, but many years forward. So it's kind of nice to be able to talk about a forecast that can really change our district. Initially, I was planning on doing another presentation, but I knew, been doing this long enough, I knew that we'd be late tonight. And since I'm at the end of the meeting, people don't want to stick around for number talks. So I mean, that's just the way it is. But next month, to all you people out there in TV land, I implore you to stick around long enough to, because this, this subject is very dear to my heart, and it's something that talks about how fortunate we all are to work in a district like Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Try to be quick. Oh, you do have to vote in the five here. I'm sorry. Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 27, donations. It is recommended the board accept the following donation from Cleveland State University. A grant of $3,287 was awarded to Andrea Novicki from Cleveland State for use in our, in Springfield schools.
So moved. Second then.
Been moved in second?
It's always exciting.
Yeah.
It's always exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's.
I know where my glasses are. They're up there. Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. And in absentia, a huge thank you to Mrs. Novicki for writing grants.
That was my church.
And for being successful. All right, do you have an additional treasurer's report? You're done. 29, Central Office.
This evening, I just want to, kind of an extension on to the letter of intent that was passed there. The, you know, the weather has not been that cooperative, but we are trying to focus on the grounds. We've had our, right now until we get this position in place, our entire maintenance team has spent this week so far mowing after the rains that we've had for the last few, few weeks, and been unable to spend much time out there. And still, very thankful to a neighbor across the street who helped one of our maintenance team get the mower out of the mud over here in the weeds this morning. So, because it's still wet and, you know, some select areas there. So just looking forward to thank OC 179 for the flexibility that they worked with us on that letter of intent, so we can focus on that. I know that's been an area that we could stand to improve in, so we're, this has been part of working on that, and hopefully we'll get a good process in place to keep up with our grounds better this year.
Thank you. This is like so exciting for me to sit here and talk about, because I love to talk about the science of reading. And so if you've heard about the science of reading, it's a huge thing that's moving in Ohio right now. Recently, Ohio came down and said that every teacher in a district is required to take a specific number of professional development hours in the science of reading. It's one of their courses that they've created. I put this information out to the teachers today after 12 o'clock, and we already have over 35% of our teachers signed up to do it. And they're not doing it during the school day. They're doing it on their time. So that is an amazing, amazing report from my office that I'd love to put out there, but I also do love to talk about the science of reading.
Yes, you do.
I just wanted to give a quick reminder that if you have a student or child at home that will be free by August 1, we do still have openings in our preschool program. We've had a little bit of a lull in some final forms, applications, so for people to register for preschool. We have another screening coming up here in May, and then anybody that registers after that will be screened in August when the teachers come back. So if you are thinking, oh, I need to get my kid signed up for preschool, please go ahead and do that now, and then we can get your kid set up before school starts.
And we usually fill up.
Yeah, we'll fill it up, but we're, we want to keep the movement going for all those screening days that we have scheduled.
All right, okay, it's been two hours, so I'm gonna be just really brief. You know, we have like 30 days left of school.
Wow.
This year flew by, and, you know, as we write, you know, as we wind down in our, in our offices, we're winding down for this year, but we're already starting getting ready for next year. So it just, it just is like a double duty almost for this next couple of months for us. But it's exciting. We got a lot of things that we're really looking forward to for next year. And then just as always, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please email me, call me, or come in and see me.
Thank you. Items worthy of your note, excuse me. April 19 is Conference Comp Day. There will be no school. April 25, Top 25 banquet, 6:00 p.m. at Springfield High School Junior High. May 21 is the next regular Board of Education meeting, 6:00 p.m. in this location. May 27 is Memorial Day, no school. May 30. I can't believe it. Students' Last Day, May 30, end of the fourth quarter and second semester. May 31 is the teacher's last day, and May 31 is graduation. Wow, and that's that.
And then that's, that's all she wrote on that, so I mean.
And that's that.
And that's a wrap. And it's, yeah.
I just, but it is, you're right. I, I remember. These are very busy days.
Yes.
Number 32, citizens' comments. Are there any comments from anyone present?
Who dares?
No? All right, with that, I see none, so a motion for adjournment, please.
Motion. Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long meeting. It was. Thank you.
Thank you.